The board is just finishing up in a private work session. They will be in in a few minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry to be running a few minutes late. We appreciate your patience. Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. This is going to be our first 2023-2024 budget workshop meeting of the Board of Education. I'm looking at all those smiling faces. I'm sure you're just as excited about this as we are. Thank you. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for our community to express their ideas and share their thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from Mr. Defendini, our superintendent. The second will be after the Pledge of Allegiance. Each session, of course, will be 30 minutes in duration, and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach the microphone in front of the auditorium, which is in the center aisle. Please state your name prior to beginning your comments so that our district clerk can accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. You will see the countdown clock on the side of the stage, which would be to your left, which will indicate your allotted time. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the board. As a reminder, during budget hearings and other special meetings, questions should address agenda items only. In the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first 10 rows in the auditorium should use the exits to my left. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to the left. Please now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation session. Please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. Again, as a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes, with each individual speaker having three minutes within which to ask their questions or to make any statements. If we do not get to all of your statements and all of our speakers during the first 30 minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. Alrighty, we will now turn to our superintendent, Mr. Defendini. Would you please kick off the start of the Budget '23-'24 season, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. I invite all board members to join us in the audience where we'll drop the screen and we'll get right into our business. Good evening, everybody, both here in the audience, for those that are with us and for those that are home. We welcome you to this first budget presentation that we have scheduled, which will lay out the parameters under which we devise the upcoming budget, as well as a lot of the particulars, the numbers, right? How all the salaries and the benefits, program-related costs, transportation-related costs, feed into what you can expect to vote on as you approach the voting season this coming May. Equally as important is to note the fact that this is only the beginning, right? There'll be multiple opportunities over the course of the next few months for us to continue to present the budget, present to the Board of Education any refinements or changes that we make to the budget along the way, as well as, once the budget's approved, the cycle of presentations that will begin, that Mr. Motisi will review with everybody, which will be part of what we deem here in Farmingdale as the roadshow. All the different multiple opportunities that the community has to ask questions and learn a little bit more about the budget as we move through this budget cycle season. So again, this is just the beginning. Look forward to a open and transparent process, and let's begin. So I'm going to start the first few slides before I turn it over to Mike to take us home, but it's always important, as we start into this process, to talk a little bit about our focus, right? The budget, at the end of the day, is a roadmap. The budget, at the end of the day, is a roadmap, right? It's the expenses, it's the appropriations that we incur in order to be able to provide programs and services to the students and to the community. So one of the things that we always look at is the idea of, like, what's working, right? What are the things in our school that we know have been a part of the fabric here in Farmingdale schools? The things that we want to try to avoid messing around with because they're things that already work, right? So as an example, the wide variety of clubs and extracurricular opportunities that we have at the elementary, the middle, and the high school will continue to be sustained as part of our current planning process for the budget for 23-24. Our fine and performing arts is something that does distinguish us, in many instances, from other school districts within the region. Those are also, and the improvements that we've made to those programs over the last several years will continue to maintain their current form as part of next year. Same thing with regard to our athletic program, a robust athletic program. Recently, within the last few years, you know that we added back our seventh-grade program. For a period of time where we only had a middle-school sports program, and based upon feedback we were getting from the community, we decided a number of years ago that we were gonna put that back. That continues to hold as we plan into 23-24. We're gonna talk about our elective programs as we get a little bit further in. We have a couple of additions to our elective programs. Again, something else that distinguishes us is our students' abilities to be able to interact with a number of programs and elective opportunities at our high school level that are distinct. And the last is maintaining class size at our elementary schools. Again, these are all fixtures. These are all things that are a part of what we do. But I wanna start by not only, obviously, iterating or, you know, going through what those things are that are the fixtures, but also spending a little bit of time talking about our achievements. Because something that we have put a lot of focus on has been our academics, right? Driving state test scores in certain areas has been a part of our work over the course of the last several years. Two good points of data that I'm gonna start with, and then I'll share some actual charts with you so that you can kind of look through what we've been up to. But you know that over the course of the last several years, we've been deemed as a school district, right, on a list, right? The list of schools where we've had trouble, over two of our schools. One of our schools was Northside, where we were a CSI school, and one of our schools, because of a subgroup here at the middle school, we were a TSI school. So I'm proud to say that after a bunch of years' worth of hard work, a commitment that came from everyone, from our administrative team, to our coaches, to our teachers, to our support staff members, we are now off of every list. We are a school in good standing. We are a district in good standing, as it pertains not only to the totality of students, but for every individual subgroup in every single school, we are deemed to be a school in good standing. So again, exceeded regional expectations, though, has been a part of what we've been trying to do. So it's not just getting off a list, right? That's just sort of a very infantile or entry-level position. How have we been doing? Again, this data here, which, again, the presentation is available for anybody that's home, will be available up on our website. For those in the community, you could certainly take a look at it. These are the designations as they existed in 2021-22, right here in this first column, and you can see there that we had a blip when it comes to the Farmingdale UFSD School District, as well as Northside and Howitt. And you can now see all of the data that comes, the accountability data that comes thereafter, deemed to be an LSI. Just translating, LSI basically means "school in good standing." So every category that you're gonna see on that chart that'll be populated puts us in a "school in good standing." But again, I didn't, that wasn't like where we were going, right? It wasn't just, "Let's just get off the list." It was, how far can we drive our students? How hard can we work in order to be able to drive some of these measures? And you can see comparative data between 2019 and 2022. This is an example of grade-three ELA compared to both the region and the county. And again, the region level is the light-blue line, and the county level, which is considered to be our area, right? Our region is that dark-blue dotted line. You can see where we were in 2019, in some instances, at the 30th, the 35th, but not above the 40th percentile for any of our schools, as you could see based upon those yellow bars. The green bar would actually represent our school district as a whole. When you compare that now to where we are three years later, comparing ourselves to other schools within our region, we have made remarkable progress in almost all areas. Desert District, as an example, we are above the state and approaching the region level. Some of our schools are now above the region level, the Nassau County average in some of our schools, and some of us are approaching that level as well. So again, a lot of growth has been made over the course of the last three years. Similarly, that was the ELA side. This is the math side. Again, you're gonna see the same kind of growth. The top chart depicts where we were. Bottom chart depicts where we are right now. And as was asked astutely a little while ago, the purple represents each of the school districts in Nassau County, and you can see where we were in the county and where we are now in the county as far as forward progress. So again, a lot of progress has been made because it has been a focal point of us to be able to drive some of this academic data. We also did a lot of work around Portrait of a Graduate. This was a project that commenced in the year that we returned to full school, that second half of the semester. We culled together a list based upon a depth of a thought exchange that took many months to complete, getting lots of feedback from lots of different stakeholders. We came up with ten tenants, right? Ten different things that were of great importance to the people in this community. Our students, our staff members, our parents, community, small businesses. We had the chance to connect with them. We actually got a chance to connect with some local parishes who we had a chance to speak to. So we really had a chance to get a real broad feel for what the expectations of our community were, and we saw these things popping up. And this was as a result of, again, many months' worth of work, respectful and resilient, valuing diversity, critical thinkers who communicate clearly, future-focused, leaders and problem solvers, independent and responsible, fostering wellness, passionate learners, tech-savvy and safe, and community-minded with the ten tenants. But one of the things that we've been struggling with was, how then do you take that and boil that down, or create some sort of an accountability system that creates a stepping stone? I'm not gonna say it's a destination, right? We're gonna be doing this for the long haul. There's probably gonna be even more growth that we're gonna make over the course of the coming years. But what is a stepping stone? What is an outside measure that we can use to determine how effective we are in being able to move the ten tenants? Because I said to you when we first started this conversation that it wasn't just gonna be flash in a pan, right? It wasn't just gonna be something fancy that we can put up, that we can send around to the community. It had to have substance. It had to have some accountability systems to it. And we spent a lot of time working with our team to come up with an accountability, something that registers a lot of different data points, right? That we could use as an outside measure that would define, alright, we're making some progress, right? We're getting a little closer to hitting that mark, whatever that mark might be for our schools. And we came up with the Blue Ribbon School Designation, which is a national recognition for school districts that are able to do one of two things, and they're listed right below here. One is, you can be just what's deemed to be exemplary high-performing, which basically means, in simplest terms, and I'm gonna oversimplify things because there's a little more technicality to some of these things, and some of the different subcategories that you have to feed into in order to be able to achieve this kind of recognition. But one is, just being one of the top school districts based upon performance data, right? If you're just up there and you've met some other accountability measures, that in and of itself can get you deemed to be a Blue Ribbon School. But the other one, which is the one that's actually even of more importance to me, is not only the overall high achieving, but closing achievement gaps. I'm not the first person, right, to note the fact that, after looking at data, there are always specific subgroups that struggle, right? Students with disabilities persistently struggle. Your English-language learners persistently struggle. People who are economically disadvantaged from a lower SES persistently struggle on both academic normed measures. So whether or not it's a state assessment, a regents exam, an AP test, an SAT, right? Postgraduate-type exams, those demographics typically struggle. So the other way that you can get the recognition is by closing those achievement gaps, by creating a lesser space, in some instances, no space, between a typical student and a student that might be in a low SES. Typical student or a student that might have a disability, or a typical student that might be an L. So closing the achievement gaps also gets you that recognition, school by school. And our goal, as we committed to the board, was, over the course of the next few years, to work towards and plan the budget. And the reason why I'm saying all this at a budget presentation, because you might ask, "Why? Is he talking about all this academic stuff when we expect to hear about numbers?" The reason is, the budget is our roadmap for the work that we're trying to do. So what exactly are we trying to do? And if I'm gonna stand behind this budget, why would I? And the answer to that question is, because this is what we're trying to do. This is the "why" behind all of the numbers that you're gonna hear from Mike. Like, why are we supporting different programs that you're gonna hear about over the course of the presentation? It's because of the fact that the end goal is to be able to hit this mark at some point in time. And I wanna say one more time, not the end. Not even this is the end. It's just an indicator, but it's an indicator that we can use that proves the fact that we've done something together, something as a collective system. My last slide before I turn it over to Mike. So in the coming weeks, you're gonna have a chance to hear, from this point forward, largely from Mike. He's gonna take you through all the numbers, right? Appropriations, how the money's being spent, salaries, benefits, contract transportation, BOSs, insurance costs. Each one, line by line, he's gonna take you through an explanation of why we are where we are with regard to each of those subcategories. He's gonna go through the revenues, right? Two big categories, obviously, property taxes is the largest, and state aid. A complete breakdown of state aid, how that played out, right? Where are we from a revenue standpoint? We're gonna talk about capital upgrades next presentation. You'll actually have a chance to hear a little bit more about capital and where we are with regard to updates on capital. And the last one is a real deep understanding of legislative analysis. So not only the state aid portion, which is connected to the revenue, but also just legislative priorities, which is a big part of the budget cycle here in New York State. What are those priorities? What are those things we should expect from New York State as far as changes in our design, changes in our operating protocols, changes in requirements or mandates that we might have as we lead into next year? We'll talk about those. And the last piece is, obviously, as it always has been and will continue to be, we encourage the conversation. Open lines of communication. You can certainly email myself. You can email Mike. You can call either of us to try to get answers to any of the questions that you might have. Pretty good about getting answers in real time tonight, but if we can't, we will certainly research your question, or we will either get back to you, or we will present that information in totality to the community when we get back up here next week. Any questions from the board at this point? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Motisi, who will take you through it.
Thank you, Paul. So this is the roadmap for tonight's meeting. The agenda tonight is gonna be focused solely on the revenue and the appropriations, and how, what went into designing this year's budget or next year's budget. I wanna talk a little bit about some proposed legislation that was mentioned in the governor's release, and how some of that might change, because we're still waiting for the legislative budget to come out. What a contingent budget, and what a contingent budget means, and the budget summary, the calendar. So similar to what Paul had just mentioned, one of the words that kept coming up while we were designing this budget was the word of momentum. And when we were establishing the goals for this year's budget, as always, we wanted to make sure that we maintain the tax levy limit, and we stay within the levy limit that's prescribed by New York State. That we designed programs and services in accordance with the 23-24 Board of Ed goals to close student achievement gaps and improve student wellness. And a big topic last year was to address the needs of our students and how the needs of our students were continuing to grow and increase. And that was a lot of what was put into the design of the 22-23 budget, and that continues into the 23-24 budget as well. And as always, we wanna maintain our strong financial position so that we can sustain whatever may come down the road, economically speaking. And that goes to the last point as well, which is protecting the district against fluctuations in state aid and the retirement systems. So to start tonight's meeting, we're gonna talk about two areas, predominantly revenue and fund balance and reserves that go along with revenue. We go a little bit more into detail into the fund balance and reserves in next week's presentation. We're gonna be heavier on the revenue tonight. And this is just a diagram that represents how the district's budget is designed. So seventy-three percent of the revenue that is used to support programs comes directly from taxes in the form of either property taxes or pilots. The next percentage is the state aid, which makes up twenty-three percent of the budget for next year. Now, the taxes and the pilots are restricted by the state, by either, basically through the tax cap formula, and the state aid is completely controlled by the state. The last portion, the four percent, is, we call it variable, and that really makes up a bunch of other categories, such as tuitions, appropriated fund balance, interest that's earned on our cash that's in our investment accounts, checking accounts, the money markets, and things like that. So we're gonna start tonight's discussion with the tax levy and briefly go through the history of the tax levy and the increases that the district has had over the past decade. So this chart right here is historical budget data, and we put up the last ten years to show the community where the district has, what the district increases have been in relation to the rest of Nassau County. As you can see, we have a ten-year average of 1.71% compared to the county ten-year average of 1.66%. So we're right there with the county average. The tax cap formula instituted back in 2011-12, I believe, was the first year, has really done what it was meant to do in terms of keeping the increases down. All of these percentage increases here that you're seeing here, all these levy increases, were within the maximum allowable levy of the Farmingdale School District. Never once did the district try to or ask the community to pierce the cap. We're gonna go into a little bit more of that in a second. And this slide, a really important slide, I think it shows how much support we get from the community by staying within the tax cap calculation and staying within our maximum allowable levy limit. Every year, we're sixty percent and above approval rating, and I just wanna make sure that we take a moment to thank the community, thank the board, and everyone for their support over the past ten years, because it really has been a challenge, in a lot of ways, to match programs with revenues, given the current system that we have. And the community comes through every time and supports the work that we're doing. So just to talk about the tax cap formula and how it works. They call it, it became known as the two-percent tax cap because it was capped at two percent or inflation, whichever was lower. But there is a kind of complicated and really boring formula that goes along with how we calculate that. We're gonna go into it in a second, just so that you have an idea. But there are exclusions, and there are things that get added back and forth before you get to what your maximum allowable number is. So even though the CPI was running hot for the last year, it was over eight percent, that doesn't mean that you get to raise taxes by eight percent, and vice versa. If the CPI was running at one percent, you're not allowed to increase your taxes by two percent because you're capped at the lesser of two percent or the CPI, but never negative. And then I go into this in more detail in the fall when I present to the board and to the community on taxes. But just so that anyone listening today knows and understands, the, excuse me, the two-percent rule or the levy increase that the district asks the community for their support doesn't necessarily translate to the property tax bill that you receive in the mail in the fall. And there's a number of reasons for that, predominantly at the accounting level and how they allocate the taxes through the different classes of properties. There's all sorts of things that go into it. It's the allocations, the grievances, it's the reassessment. But for tonight's presentation, I just wanted to make sure I mention that. I do have a copy of that presentation on my website. If anybody's interested in reading about it, or you could always give me a call if you wanna understand it better, or come in the fall when I do that presentation to the board. So up here is the formula that New York State has written or designed for the 23-24 or every-year tax levy limit calculation. It starts with the prior-year levy. Then you take that number, you multiply it by the tax-based growth factor, which is the increase in brick-and-mortar within the district, brick-and-mortar properties. You then add in prior-year pilots, or current year, 22-23 pilots, and then you subtract out capital, local expenditures. We're gonna go into what that means in a second, to come up with an adjusted 23 tax levy, which then gets multiplied by the lesser of two percent or the CPI. And then we're gonna subtract out pilot properties for next year. As pilot properties get older, they pay more in pilot payments towards their IDAs, their respective IDAs, and that in turn lowers the tax levy for the community. And then lastly, the final exclusion or set of exclusions. The one number there, the 3.9 million, represents a combination- 3.9 million, represents a combination of district building aid and district debt. So the way the formula is written is that districts are allowed to ask the community for the money that is needed to pay their debt service in the coming year. That's because those are government bonds. When we issue a bond, such as the bond for the Aquatic Center, that needs to be paid for, that needs to be guaranteed. So that becomes part of the formula that is allowed to run with the tax cap formula. And then you subtract from that number any building aid that you're receiving. So for argument's sake, if you had $1 million in debt payments, and you received $500,000 in building aid, that number would be half a million dollars that would be going in addition to the levy. And then lastly, court orders and judgments, we've never had those, so I'm not going to waste a lot of time on that. And then ERS and TRS, there is an exclusion for anything over two percentage points increase in the pension systems. So for example, if the TRS rate was 10% and it went to 12%, which actually represents a 20% increase in expenses, there is no exclusion. But if it were to go from 10% to 13%, you would have a 1% exclusion that would be allowed to be factored into the calculation. So right now, and the way it was published, the way the information that was submitted to the Office of the State Comptroller's Office, which is required by school districts every March 1st, our maximum allowable levy for the 2324 school year is $136,812,306, which represents a 2.3% increase in the tax levy for next year. As a reminder, Long Island's average proposed levy for next year, per the OSC data, is 2.29%. So right now, Farmingdale is right in line with the rest of Long Island with the way their tax cap formula worked out. Briefly, some of the larger pilots that go into that equation that we just talked about, LIPA, represents the largest portion of the pilot payments that we receive, followed by TDI Jefferson Station, which is a complex here in Nassau. So because Farmingdale has a split taxing jurisdiction, we do have pilot properties on both the Nassau and the Suffolk side. We have a far larger number of properties on the Babylon side than we do the Nassau side, but they are smaller in size and in value. So for next year, we are seeing a $260,000 increase in pilots, or a 5.69% increase in pilots. And as a reminder, the more pilot money that we get, the more that we reduce the tax levy. So moving along to state aid, which is the next largest category, there are three aid packages that we'd like to discuss tonight. One is the unrestricted aid. The second is reimbursement aid, and then the last one is categorical or grants. So unrestricted aid is very formula-driven, it's based off of needs in a district, wealth. It looks at property values, it looks at medium income values, it looks at free and reduced populations. Whereas reimbursement aid or expense-driven aid is derived off of the expenses that the school has from the previous year. So to get into some of the unrestricted aids, foundation aid was intended to provide districts with an appropriate share of state aid based on wealth and student need factors. Foundation aid was designed a number of years ago, back in 2008 or '09, before I started working here, but it was never allowed to fully develop and run as the formula was originally designed. At some point after the financial crisis, right around when I started with the district, they froze foundation aid, and it had been frozen ever since until Governor Hochul took over. If you were to go back and look at the way the foundation aid formula was written and designed, Farmingdale should have received $8.5 million every single year from 2009 through the day that Governor Hochul decided to phase in the foundation aid that were owed to districts. And we're going to talk about that in a little bit more, but I think it's important to realize that when the foundation aid formula was designed, I don't know, as I mentioned, I wasn't around, but I don't know that it was designed with a method for fully funding it, which is why districts were penalized, and districts like Farmingdale, not all districts, but districts like Farmingdale, were not able to receive all of the aid that they were entitled to. The last category there is high tax aid, which is intended to help offset taxes in wealthier areas. Farmingdale is considered a wealthier area by the state's standards. However, the levels of the high tax aid have been frozen since the 2013-14 school year, so we haven't received more money in that area since then. The reimbursable categories are all listed here. We have transportation aid, BOSEs aid, I'm going to go into all of them, high cost and private excess cost aid, software, library textbook, and computer hardware and technology. So all of these are driven from, well, the first four categories, I should say, are driven from our current year expenses. So transportation aid is a ratio based off of the expenses that we report on our annual ST3. So the way the state projects out next year is they ask us for an estimate of what we're planning to spend in the 2223 school year, and then they project out what they're going to give us next year. And what ultimately ends up happening is when we file our final ST3 in September, the aid categories eventually do get adjusted based off of the district's share. For transportation aid, the district's share for next year is 51%, .51. Same thing for BOSEs, so BOSEs is again an expense that's based off of an estimate. The aid is based off of the estimate, and then the expenses drive the subsequent year's aid. Our aid ratio for BOSEs for next year is .63%, or 63%. Public high-cost excess cost aid and private excess cost aid are both related to special education students, and specifically students that exceed a threshold that is set by the state. So for argument's sake, if the threshold set by the state is $50,000, the district will receive additional aid on those students that cost more than $50,000 to educate. Software, library, and textbook aid, and computer hardware and technology aid are all really the smallest categories of state aid for the district. They are a fixed amount that is driven off of a student headcount. There's really, I honestly think that this is going to be phased out eventually. It's so small in the way that the state does these formulas that I don't really see these being separate in the future. Eventually, they'll probably just be rolled into foundation aid at some point, but as it is right now, you do get a fixed dollar amount per pupil. Talk about grants very briefly, and the district's plan for universal pre-K next year. So as it stands right now, the way the allocations look for the Farmingdale School District, we are planning to run a program very similar to last year, where we will be operating a full-day program with 36 students. We did have the lottery the other day for the full-day program. And the half-day program, we'll be running with 150 students, which that lottery has not happened yet, but it will shortly. These grants are not part of the general fund, so these are not something that is technically part of the budget that we're asking the community to vote on. This money is given from the state, and it is recorded in a separate fund with the expenses and revenues being recorded as such, and accounted as such. Right now, I think one of the biggest challenges that we're having with trying to expand the pre-K program is really space. So we're limited on space right now. We are looking into some avenues where we may be able to change that, but for right now, we are capped at the 36 on the full-day program and 150 on the half-day program. Half-day program, thank you. Lastly, we do have some other grants on the bottom here that the district does receive funding for, the Title Grants, which are Title I, Title II, Title III. Those are federal grants that pass through to the state level. The IDEA grants, which are related to special education students. And then Nassau County grants and special legislative grants, those are much smaller and are usually specific in what their purposes are for. As an example, last year, one of our special legislative grants was to help fund the playground at Woodward Parkway. So that's an example of something else that we do get money for occasionally. When you look at the state aid package year over year, so on the screen right there, you see the 2223 state aid that we are going to receive this year, per the last output report, versus the governor's run for the 2324 school year. And what stands out the most is the first category, which is foundation aid. So as I mentioned before, foundation aid was being phased in by Governor Hochul over three years. The 2324 school year represents the final year of the phase-in, and because of how high inflation has been running, there was additional money that was added to that formula, which we haven't experienced in years, and caught a lot of districts off guard, because we got a lot more money than we were expecting. And it couldn't have come at a better time, and we're going to go into that a little bit when we get to the appropriations. But just to give you an idea, the district was estimating 3.4 million in foundation aid for this year, based off of the formula. The final phase-in was supposed to give us 3.4, and we ended up getting an increase of 5.7 million because of how high inflation was. Going down the line, like I mentioned earlier, some of these are expense-driven categories, and really, the decreases in the high cost and the private excess cost, that's usually a timing thing. It happened this year as well. If you look back to last year, the high-cost excess cost, we were not estimating 1.6 million, but because of the timings with the way the stack system works, and the filing of the special education students and their IPs, and all of the paperwork that has to go up to the state, they don't always have the most accurate information there. So there are decreases there, but I would estimate that those are actually going to be positive by this time next year. And then lastly, just going down the line, transportation. Last year, we actually had a big bump up in our transportation contract. I'm going to talk about our transportation contract in a little bit, but there was one year where there was a higher increase than the other years, and you're seeing the reflection in that, reflection in that increase showing up in the state aid there with the $427,000 increase year over year. So the total state aid increase that we're projecting for next year is around $6 million to help support the budget. Some other forms of revenue that I wanted to bring to the board and community's attention are listed on this page. Tuitions and district billing, so school districts do get to bill other districts when we are educating students that do not live within the district. So one of the biggest increases that we have noticed in this category is for McKinney-Vento students. So as McKinney-Vento students find permanent housing, and we start to transition them to their new district, when that transition happens, and they're still being educated in the Farmingdale School District, we're able to invoice those other districts and receive compensation for educating those students, including the transportation of those students. Some other categories, foster and special education are also included in there. We've always had foster and special education students, but I felt it was important to highlight that number this year, because it is a big number that does help support the programs. Rental of property, this is BOSEs and outside organizations, very small in comparison to the rest of our budget, but noteworthy, 135,000. Our Medicaid-eligible students, we work with a consultant that helps with the filing process of all the Medicaid-eligible students. It is a rather complicated process. We estimate that we're going to have approximately $250,000 from that for next year. Interest is the biggest increase that we are estimating for next year. Everyone, I think, knows what's going on in the economy right now. The Fed keeps increasing rates, and we are moving our money into positions where we are able to generate much more interest on our money. So we recently, the board recently approved in agreement NIF, Ni-class, excuse me, Ni-class, which is giving out over 4% interest, so we're going to start banking with Ni-class, as well as our major Capital One and Chase are all starting to give more competitive interest rates. And just to give you an idea of how much of an increase this is to us, last year, we reported less than $100,000 in interest, and this year, we're going to be somewhere in the $200,000 range in interest, and we're projecting to be as high as half a million dollars in interest for next year. Refunds of prior year's expenses, that's predominantly made up of BOSEs. So each year, because we are a component district of BOSEs, BOSEs are not allowed to keep a surplus at the end of the year. They have to distribute any surplus at the end of the year to their component districts. That's normally what we get into that category, and it's usually around that amount, around that amount or a little more. And then fund balance, reserves, and the application of fund balance of $5 million. So we're going to talk a little bit more about fund balance and reserves, as I said, in next week's presentation, but the fund balance and the reserves, the $5 million of appropriated fund balance is used to help balance the budget. It's also used to ensure that should something that we did not plan for happen, that we have the availability in the budget to pay for it. So God forbid something catastrophic were to happen that financially to the district where we needed to access emergency funds, that application of this fund balance allows us the ability to do that. It also allows us to maintain a healthy financial position. So there are a lot of districts out there that are not in healthy financial positions, and in order to make payroll, they need to borrow. And they borrow in the form of RANs and TANs, which stands for Revenue Anticipation Notes or Tax Anticipation Notes. Farmingdale has never had to borrow, since Paul and I have been doing this, never had to borrow to pay our payroll or to pay our bills. So it's really, it's really a function of sound financial planning and having a strong healthy position that allows us to maintain that level of appropriated fund balance each year, and to keep it going into the future years. Lastly, other state aid. This is something that we receive from the state. Sometimes we get miscellaneous categories. It could be a grant in aid with no specific purpose, or it could be termed homeless aid, but that is what fits into that category. There are some smaller categories, total miscellaneous revenue of $920,000, that I just wanted to put out there in the effort, in an effort to be fully transparent with the community. Really, the biggest number on here is the inter-fund revenue number of $450,000, and I think it's important to note that that number represents the employee benefits that are paid for out of the general fund, right? It's paid for out of our regular bills, but it's really attributed to the cafeteria fund or the school lunch fund, which is a self-sustaining fund. So at the end of the year, when the cafeteria fund closes its books, or the school lunch fund closes its books, they have to send the general fund money for having fronted the cash for those benefits. As a summary, the proposed revenue budget is up on the screen. Year-over-year increases of, from 182.8 million to 194. almost 3 million. And as I had said to you when we were going through the specific categories, if you look at the interest line, which is the 1, 2, 3, fourth line down, we go from $50,000 to $500,000. That's how drastically the environment, the economy is changing right now in terms of interest rate and what we can get in banking. And lastly, as a reminder, the Long Island's average proposed 2324 tax levy is 2.29%, which is exactly where the Farmingdale School District is right now with its maximum allowable Moving on to the appropriation side, or the expenditure side of the budget, there is, we start off with the salaries, which makes up the largest portion of the 2324 budget, makes up the largest portion of every budget. Increases in salaries are a reflection of step increases and contractual raises, and any staffing increases that the district needed for the 2324 school year. All bargaining units did negotiate their contracts in the 2122 school year, and we have two units which are expiring in June of '25, with the rest of the units expiring in June 30th of 2026. And below that is a graph that shows all of the current bargaining units, the contractual raises that were given as part of the collective bargaining. raises that were given as part of the collective bargaining, as well as step, that is the ultimate determining factor for their increases. This slide talks about the staffing needs, the increases in staffing that we're talking about for next year, and basically what the district did during the budget process in order to plan to meet the Board of Ed's goals. So there was a realignment of staffing due to either retirees or new hires, so we did have a number of people retire. When that happens, we take a look at where, what positions are leaving and if that position needs to be filled or if it needs to be filled in another capacity, as well as are there any mandates out there or any requirements out there that are needed by the district in order to fulfill that, in order to fill another need? And that would be, that would mean a new hire. So specifically, year-over-year, we had 2.4 new hires that are in the budget docs that will be posted to the website. But on the screen here, this explains what we did to align with the Board of Ed goals to close the achievement gaps and improve student wellness. And as you can see, there are initiatives at all levels, including the high school, Howitt Middle School, the elementary schools, and to meet the needs of our special, of our special needs students. Moving on to benefits, so this was the biggest surprise this year in terms of what districts were planning for. Up on the screen, you can see I have an almost 15-year graph depicting the increases each year in major medical. The '23 increase is off the charts. It literally came in so high that a lot of districts were not expecting and had not planned for such an increase. As I mentioned earlier, the district, Farmingdale, is in a very financially secure position. We do watch our finances carefully, and we do make sure that we are planning appropriately. Needless to say, we were not, we did not budget enough for that specific item, but because we have the appropriated fund balance that we utilize each year, we were able to absorb that hit. The increase year-over-year, though, in order to, in order to make sure that we don't fall into this position again next year, is rather large in comparison to the increase. So the health insurance increase that we were given from the major medical carriers was about 15% in January of '23. The word that we are receiving from, the word circling in the other business officials is that they're expecting a similar increase next year. No one knows if that's really hearsay or not, but when we polled all of the other districts, almost every district is going out somewhere between 12 and 13% increases in their year-over-year, 12 and 15%, I'm sorry, 12 and 15% increases in their year-over-year health insurance budgets. So some of the reasons that we could get from the major medical carriers as to why this was happening was that doctors' visits, the frequencies of doctors' visits are increasing, but predominantly, it was rising medical costs and inflation. And with all of the increases that we're going to see tonight, the predominant factor a lot of times was frequency increase and inflation. But the 2324 budget is designed to meet this increased need in the major medical. Again, hopefully, the rates don't come in this high again. That would be the first time, obviously, in the last 15 years that we've seen such an increase like this. Employee benefits for the pension systems has actually remained fairly flat. So this chart, actually, whereas the previous chart showed you the increases each year, this chart is showing you the rates each year. And as you can see, it's been pretty level and pretty consistent. The ERS, TRS rates for next year are going to go down slightly. Those rates are actually paid in the '24, '25 school year. So right now, the rate that's going to get paid for next year is 10.29%, which is actually a little higher from last year's rates. And that 10.29% will be a reflection of this year's salaries. And then there was a slight increase in the ERS for next year, which is the Employees' Retirement System. As you can see from the chart, the Employee Retirement System is the blue one, and then the TRS is the orange one. But the increases aren't so dramatic like the health insurance ones. So these are manageable increases for the district to plan for. Some of the other benefits that are out there include FICA Medicare, workers' compensation, and other fringe benefits like dental, optical, flexible benefits, unemployment, life insurance. These all remain relatively consistent in comparison to the other categories. But worth noting on here that there were some slight increases in those categories as well, again, being driven by similar factors as other employee benefits. Transportation contract, we are in year four of five. The district negotiated a five-year contract right before the pandemic happened. We were very fortunate in that respect because what happened when districts shut down in that spring of 2020 caused a lot of, it actually caused one bus company to actually go out of business, and it caused the other ones to raise their rates 30, 40, 50% increases in transportation costs. So we were very fortunate to have negotiated and settled with a contract that settled at 4% in year one, 4% in year two, 7% in year three, which was, shows that blip on the screen that I showed you earlier about the transportation aid, and then the last two years are 4% as well. So next year, at some point, we will start to plan for another RFP for a new contract. But as of right now, we are locked in at 4% for the next two school years. Educational Bus is our main provider. We, we used to use a combination of BOSI's and educational, as well as some other cooperatives. But because of all the transportation issues that we were experiencing with BOSI's, or I should say that BOSI's was experiencing, the transportation issues they were experiencing, we decided to utilize Educational Bus completely, and it actually helped us out a lot in terms of expenses, and it helped us out a lot in terms of service for the students. We're looking into some new software, some new routing software for next year, and a new program for our bus drivers that will allow them to have programmed routes in their, on their, on a tablet on their bus, so that they know exactly where they're going and they will have to spend less time learning their routes. We're also investigating a parent app system that we are looking into how that would function and if it could function with our current setup and the setup of these GPS tablets. But this would all be built into the contract with Educational Bus if it becomes something that is feasible for the district. The district does currently own three smaller buses. We call them vans. We are looking to purchase a 28-passenger van, and we're probably going to obsolete one or two of the other vans. This will really help us with a lot of the, a lot of midday or no-shows that we get sometimes, with sometimes you have a substitute driver, or the bus company runs out of drivers. Having this flexibility with a larger bus will allow us to provide better service to the community. It will also help us to better coordinate field trips between buildings or field trips that are local when, when we don't have a contracted bus available. And then other contract transportation services that are built into that, there are a few cooperatives and a few inter-municipal agreements that we do utilize in order to help keep costs down. One example is, I think, the plane, Bethpage. Bethpage School District, we contract with them and share seats on a bus in order to help save money. Continuing with the theme that we talked about last year with our special education population, we continue to see increasing special education enrollment and costs. To give you an example, up here on the screen shows you BOSI services. We're estimating almost 3/4 of a million dollar increase in our BOSI services related directly to special education. Private placement tuitions, these are private schools that need, for students that have very specific needs. We're estimating $200,000 in increases there based on our current, current knowledge of our students. Contractual special education services, which include RFPs and other types of evaluations, estimated $96,000 there. And contractual salaries and other appropriations are increasing by $439,000. The total special education budget for next year is estimated to be 27.6 million dollars, excluding any employee benefits related to the staffing that is making up that number. This graph shows the enrollment trends, and it's a topic of conversation that comes up frequently, what is happening with our population. And we talked about it a lot last year when we were designing the budget, and as you can see, this year, the trend continues. We are seeing, we continue to see increases in our special education students as we see decreases in our general education population. And it really, it shows the, it shows the, the cost drivers, really, is what I'm trying to go with this. So on this next slide, the mandated special education expenses, as you see, the blue line represents the general ed and the orange line represents the special education expenses. And this is the rate at which those expenses are increasing. So year-over-year, it's, I think it was a 5.5 or a 6%, 6% increase in special education. But it, the needs of the students are really, these two charts here particularly, in particular, really highlight the needs of our students and how the needs are growing and what we've been trying to do with our budgets each year to help support and meet those children where they are. Some other appropriation categories, year-over-year increase of $2.3 million includes capital projects, debt, service, contract services, utilities, insurance, textbooks, equipment, legal fees, tuitions, which we touched on briefly. These are the increases that we're seeing. Tuitions, $240,000, majority of that is made up of special education. Utilities, we're seeing a rather large jump in utility expenses to half a million dollars. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone here, given what current electric and gas bills look like on a regular basis. Everything else is really being driven by students' needs and rising inflations. Insurance costs are built into this as well. Those were 15% increases. So materials and supplies, really some small one-times in there, but most of it's increases due to inflation. And then contract services of $800,000, a large portion of that is represented by special Year-over-year cost element, or the Appropriations Summary Report, shows the year-over-year increase of $11.4 million or 6.24%. A point worth noting is the CPI for 2022 was approximately 8% or a little bit over 8%. So I was glad to see that the expenses were not growing at more than that. So it is worth noting that. And then I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to line four and five, BOSI's and contract transportation. So it's a little deceiving when you look at it in this format, but the, the money from the BOSI's budget for transportation was moved into contract transportation. So it's showing a smaller increase in BOSI's than is actually happening, because I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that, because I just mentioned before how much BOSI's special education expenses were going up. So contingent budget, should, the way the budget vote works is in May, we have the first budget vote. If that vote, if that vote were to fail, the Board of Education has a decision to make with conversations with the administration to say, do we want to put out the same vote? Do we want to put out the same budget or change the budget up for a second vote in June? If the vote were to go down a second time in June, we go to what is known as a contingent budget. A contingent budget, in its simplest form, is no increase in the year-over-year levy. So 3,072,863 would have to be removed from the current years, from the current proposed budget. There is a formula that goes along with that. It's not just a straight 3 million, take it from one spot and you're done. There is a formula of balancing where that money actually has to come from between the instructional side, the administrative side, and the capital side. So it's a formula that's given to us from the state. We'd have to work through that to see where we would have to make the reductions. But should the budget be voted down twice and we were to go to a contingent budget, we would have to have those conversations with the board in terms of what areas they would want to look at in order to meet that requirement. Some proposed legislation for next year that I thought would be worthy of noting tonight. Built into the foundation aid is 583,000 of set-aside money, the governor's calling it. Foundation aid was intended to be unrestricted in its purpose. So there's a lot of pushback being given up in Albany regarding this because it is really being restricted for a specific purpose. Again, word on the street is that this isn't going to happen, that it's not going to be listed separately and be restricted in any way. We will find out when the legislative budget comes out in April. But that is 583,000. That was, that's mainly being focused on reading and math grades 3 to 8. STAR continues to decline as a revenue source for the district. This is because the state is shifting from the exemption program to the personal income tax credit program. So if you're someone who's owned your house for a long time in Farmingdale and you make under a certain threshold, you are probably in the exemption program, which means you don't pay the, that portion of the taxes. The STAR is automatically removed from your property tax bill. For anyone else who bought a house after 2015 or is above a certain income level, the governor has, or the state is really pushing you to go to the credit program, which requires you to pay the full tax upfront, and then you get a check in the mail later on. I'll talk more about that also in the tax levy presentation in the fall. Zero emission school bus reporting, districts are to submit annual progress reports on the implementation of zero emissions bus initiatives. So there's something in there, I'm not really sure what it means yet, but it's an annual submission of what we're doing to work towards the initiative of being fully electric by 2035. We think that that's going to get a little bit of pushback and that that deadline might get pushed out. The bus companies are not saying that the infrastructure is there to meet this need. So more to come on that. It is something we're watching closely because that is not going to be an easy feat for any, for any, any district to accomplish. And then lastly, the retiree income waiver. So the governor is proposing to allow retired, retired state employees to continue to earn a salary without a cap. These employees would be some, these would be our retired police officers that work with the district. Currently, they are capped, or they were capped at a certain level. We then have to work with them to watch those levels to make sure that they don't exceed how much they can make on an annual basis. But the governor is proposing to extend that exception. And then last, just to wrap things up, the summary, year-over-year increase, 194,297,000, 279, 297,069 budget for '23, '24, or an 11.4 million dollar increase. The percentage increase is a 6.24% increase with a proposed tax levy increase of 2.3%. Again, worth noting to the community and to the board that the district's average is right there with the rest of Long Island and that our increase in our appropriation budget is, is running below what inflation was for the year. The 2324 budget calendar, so tonight, Wednesday, March 15th, is the first budget meeting. Next Wednesday, we will have our second budget meeting with the board and the community to discuss long-term planning considerations and capital projects. We'll also revisit a summary of tonight's presentation, followed by the BOSI's, followed by the Adopt the Budget at the April meeting, which is then followed by the BOSI's Admin Budget, which is the quickest budget, quickest meeting the board has all year long, which is only about five minutes in order to approve the BOSI's budget. We are required to do that. We are required to do that because we are a component district, so we need to approve that each year so that they can operate. And then lastly, the budget hearing, which is one week before the budget vote on May 9th. And the budget vote will be held on Tuesday, May 16th, in the Howitt West Gymnasium from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that is all I have for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Mike, I do have a question. Going back to page 24, where we talked about the universal pre-K program for '23, '24, I know it's, I know that it's been a grant, the full day, 36 students, half-day, 150. Are those numbers regulated on the amount of money we're getting or the space as well?
Both. It's a combination of both, so.
So we potentially able to have more than 36 students or more than 150 students?
The way it's structured right now, no. The way it's structured right now, no. But if we could free up some space and then apply for other pockets of money, we might be able to accommodate that.
Okay, that made that clear for me. Also, when you talk about the buses' transportation, I think it's on 26? Let me find it for you. 36, maybe. Where it starts with the transportation there. Nope. Hold on.
36 is transportation.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay. For the buses, I know you, I was going to ask about electric buses, but you made that clear at the, towards the end, where there's a possibility they could go that route. We won't know until it actually happens, pretty much, maybe 10 years or?
The conversations are going to start sooner than that. It's really a matter of two things, costs and infrastructure. And with infrastructure, it's space. The current bus yards would not be able to support the space that would be needed for all of the charging stations, stations for the buses or the fleets that they would need. And then the costs also, the costs aren't there yet. The costs are not something that districts would be able to support without substantial funding from the federal or state governments.
Do you think that the school districts will actually be asked of how would this work for them, or it's going to be one of those mandates that seem to come down? Any idea?
I don't, I don't know how to answer that one. I think it's a combination of both. I think it's going to be a mandate, I think maybe the mandate might get pushed off a little bit or it might get changed a little bit, because right now it seems to be pretty hard, you're becoming all-electric. So the funding and the legislative needs, legislative needs to step in.
And just to add a little bit more to that, the, we've been collecting as organizations, the business officials, superintendents, the costs associated with being able to roll that out. We're going to, in a forward, more forward-facing fashion, provide that information to the state so that they have an understanding of what they're actually asking for, because the costs are astronomical. And again, not only on the actual purchase price of the buses and the contract costs that would go up as a result of it, but as well as the infrastructure that we would need in order to be able to do the charging. Some districts have done some analysis, and in some instances, you're talking about charging a handful of buses could use as much power as we use to power the high school for an entirety of a day. So the infrastructure that would be needed from the local power grid would have to be a part of the conversation as well. So there's a lot to this. We're trying to get them information so that they can make smart decisions about timing this stuff out instead of just creating a mandate that's really unreachable.
Kind of my point, because when we meet with all our legislators and assemblymen and senators, we have to have that conversation. I don't want to wait another couple of years to find out, oops, they're doing it already. Because I know there was PTA conventions I've been to in the years past where they have a show in electric school buses. So that's been kind of on the eyesight for a while. And talk about the zero admission with the bus reporting, they keep throwing different things related to the buses in it, so I'm a little concerned about that. So let us know when we have to start asking the questions.
Definitely worthy of putting into our pamphlet for next year. Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Just give us a minute to set up for the second public participation.
Thank you, Mr. Mottisi. Again, does anyone have any questions before we move on?
No.
All righty. Okay, now I'd like to open the meeting for our second public participation session. Again, please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. Of course, as a reminder, the public participation will be limited to 30 minutes in total, with each individual speaker having three minutes within which to ask their questions or to make their statements. And the mic is now open for our public participation. Going once? Okay. All right, thank you all for your attention. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good evening. Thank you.